Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much for attending. Hold on. That's right. Thank you, everybody, for attending the Audit Committee. So do we have any apologies?
We do, Chair. Good morning, members. We've got two apologies to this morning's meeting from Councillors Oxpro and Celis. Thank you, Chair.
I thank you very much.
Could I also give apologies for Mrs. Hensstock as well, please, Chairman? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any declarations of interest as set out on the agenda? No, that's absolutely great. As far as I know, there are no items requiring urgent attention. And so can we come to a confirmation of the minutes? Is everybody content with the minutes? I'll take that as yes. Thank you very much. Yeah, okay. Well, could I just ask, just as a follow-up on the minutes? The minutes made several recommendations. I just wondered if one of the officers could just update the committee about the outcome of these recommendations, the progress made from them, the actions following? We would like to do that.
Do you want me to start, Chair? Thank you. There were two recommendations relating to the contract procedure rules and the Council Constitution, which were direct recommendations to full council. They were subsequently approved by full council with a slight tweak to the contract procedure rules, namely, there is a slight delay to the Procurement Act coming into effect, which, as a consequence, has had an impact on the proposal for the ONS Task and Finish. So, given the delay to the Procurement Act, the ONS, the proposal for ONS to establish a task and finish group has now been in effect, sent to ONS for a decision at its January ONS committee meeting.
Thank you very much. We've got, I think, on page four, I think, of the minutes, it talks about an update to the internal audit plan. I presume we will deal with that update during the item on internal audit. And we've then got the Code of Conduct on page five, and it talked about getting some training, a Code of Conduct refresher training to be arranged for members, which is ACA 0924. I'm just wondering what's happening about that.
We are looking at, myself, Mrs. Bowen, the Deputy Manager Officer, are looking at putting a session in, an all-member session in this side of Christmas, which will, in effect, be twofold. It will be to look specifically at the Members' Code of Conduct, but also we're picking up quite a bit of member demand around council procedure rules, so rules of debate, when you can bring forward motions, when you can speak again. So our vision is to have a twofold session, namely, one around the Members' Code of Conduct specifically, and the second one around the rules of debate for council. So they'll be interlinked as one session. But it's probably worth, as well, saying, Chair, because it was published yesterday, we have now the first of its kind of this council administration. We've got a Code of Conduct hearing panel, because, of course, this is the governance arm of the A&amp;G Committee. The Code of Conduct hearing panel is meeting next Tuesday to look at some matters alleging breaches of the Member Code of Conduct. So there will be some training for those members who are sitting on that hearing beforehand next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Anybody got any further comments? Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Can we move on to the annual statement of accounts? councillor Edmunds?
Thank you, Chair. This report is presented to the Audit and Governance Committee for approval of the council's audited financial statements and associated documents for the financial year ending the 31st of March 2024. Members are asked to approve the wording of the Letter of Representation, the audited statement of accounts, the annual governance statement, and the summary of accounts. Additionally, delegated authority is requested for the Section 151 officer and the committee chair to sign the audited account should the assurance letter from the Devon Pension Fund not be received by the time of this meeting. The report highlights the council's strong financial management, noting that the audit identified no significant adjustments with only two minor disclosure changes, and that the accounts are in line with those previously considered by the committee in July 2024. The report details the council's financial return for 2324, noting a small surplus of £149,000, which will be allocated to the council's unmarked reserves. The council's auditors, Bishop Fleming, have indicated that they anticipate issuing an unqualified audit opinion, reflecting the quality of the financial statements and supporting evidence provided by the finance team, subject to the final review queries being resolved and receipt of the Devon Pension Fund audit assurance letter. Considering the length of the statutory account shortened version was prepared for 2324, the summary of the accounts in Appendix D is more user-friendly document, which can be easily read by members of the public and/or businesses to get an understanding of the financial position of the council for 202324. And finally, Chair, it's pleasing to note that Bishop Fleming assessed the Borough Council as green in all five areas of quality of financial statements, accuracy of financial records, quality of working papers, availability of staff, and readiness for the audit. And I guess that's why the finance team have been nominated as Finance Team of the Year for the Public Finance Awards 2024. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. I think I'd like to be first to actually commend, on behalf of the committee, everything that's just been said. And we've got a great deal of thanks to our Section 151 officer, Mrs. Buckland, and her team. This is absolutely brilliant. We went through the accounts in great detail, I believe, in our July meeting. So unless anybody's desperate to repeat history, I think we should really just be concentrating on the changes. So perhaps Mrs. Buckle can take us through those.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you for those words. I will pass that on to the finance team. Thank you. Yes, Chairman, with regards to any changes, I think these are set out in the covering report. So we do, the council does have an investment with the CCLA Property Fund, and there is a change with regards to the disclosure there, because there is a statutory override in place, and we've updated the date that that finishes, which is 31st of March 2025. You will see that the CCLA Property Fund also features in Bishop Fleming's auditors' reports, and I think it's fair to say that for next year's accounts for 2425, we will consider whether we change our accounting treatment around CCLA Property Fund. If I could just give a bit of background around that fund. So that's an investment. The council has half a million pounds invested in that. Our treatment is such that we believe that that fund is not redeemable on demand, and indeed, during the Covid pandemic, we were advised by CCLA that there was a six-months freeze, if you like, on any dealings. So we couldn't have actually liquidated our investment during that time, because there was no dealing allowed by the fund. However, Bishop Fleming's view of that investment is the same as Grant Thornton's, and therefore, we will consider whether we change our treatment for the next financial year, given the fact that statutory override is in place. However, there are no guarantees that that statutory override will be in place in the future. And without the statutory override, what it means is any increase in value on that investment or decrease in value on that investment has to go through the council's income and expenditure account, and would actually be a profit or a loss in that financial year. So we'll give consideration to that. It's something we will review when we bring the reports back to members in March on treasury management. We'll make a recommendation as to whether we change our accounting treatment for 2425. So I don't know if there's any questions on the CCLA part, Chairman, before I move to talk about leases.
Do we have any questions? No, that's great. We'll carry on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So with regard to leases, there is a change in the accounts. It's only disclosure, but on two of the leases, we disclose the rental income up until the expiry date of the lease, and the audit has advised that we should have only taken that up to the break clause within the lease. So on page 10 there of the covering report, you can see that by changing it, it does change the amount between one and five years by £680,000 and later than five years by £2.9 million. So this is just a disclosure item within the leases note. It's only for presentational purposes, and it represents rental income due, rental income is still due to the council in the normal way, in accordance with the lease terms. So those are the two changes, Chairman, one around the lease note and one around financial instruments on the CCLA disclosure, with the statutory override being extended until March 25. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments on those?
Just one on that last point, just so I make sure I understand it. That's presumably to, what's the best way of putting this, to make sure that we've taken a correct risk assessment of leases expiring. Either they could expire at the first opportunity, the breakpoint. So you should account on that basis. Not that we're expecting them to.
Not that we're expecting them to, no. It's just that the lease note is basically projecting rental income due to the council in future years, and because there is a break clause, then it's only to take the rental income payable to the council up until that break clause date, because in theory, the tenants could use that break clause, and that could form the end of the lease. Yeah, exactly that, Vice Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. That's being prudent. Thank you. Could we move on to the pension?
Yep. So with regards to the pensions, Bishop Fleming are still waiting for the auditor of the pension scheme, who are Grant Thornton, to issue their pension assurance note to Bishop Fleming. So Bishop Fleming can't formally sign off our accounts and give the audit opinion until they've got that final piece of the jigsaw from Grant Thornton on the pension audit, because obviously, the figures within our accounts are all part of the Devon Fund. But I suspect Bishop Fleming, when they present their audit completion report, can give an update on when they're expecting that audit report through from Grant Thornton. Thank you.
councillor Johnson?
Thank you. Do we have any idea how long this letter is going to take to arrive? Are we expecting it, Bishop Fleming, in the next week, months, three months?
The latest, we understand, it should be hopefully by the end of this month. So we have started receiving some for some of the other county council schemes now, so hopefully it will be certainly this month or next month.
Sorry, I've got a question. I'm just wondering if this is an assurance. Are we expecting any radical changes, do you feel, from the other results that Grant Thornton are giving to other councils?
I would say it's extremely unusual for there to be any changes coming out of the receipt of the Pension Fund Assurance Letter. I mean, clearly, we have to ensure that the data within it is consistent with what we've got within West Evans Financial Statements, that it's giving us the assurances that we requested. But in the vast, vast majority of cases, it doesn't result in any changes to the council or indeed, any additional work. Occasionally, it can, but that's very much the exception.
Thank you very much. Any questions, further questions on Pension Fund? Yeah, no further questions of that. I believe councillor Tieddon has got a general question.
Slightly far-flung field, this one, but Lisa's used to me doing that. My eye was drawn to the risk matrix in the report, and I should have spotted this when we first went through it long ago. But there is a likelihood axis, which ends with almost certain. And I just wondered when something stops being a risk and is an actual inevitability? If it's almost certain, what do we think of that as a risk? Is it, I mean, should we be, I mean, the one my eye is drawn to is, in fact, Health and Wellbeing Services, and I'm not going to go through that subject per se. But if a risk is almost certain, presumably, we would assume it's going to happen and make financial provision for it.
I think we'll obviously discuss the subject matter in detail at the relevant item, but the question is, are we making sufficient provision in the accounts?
Well, two questions. One is, if something's almost certain, should it appear on a risk register? If it's going to happen, it's going to happen. But more importantly, if it is on the risk register or even somewhere else, and it's almost certain, presumably, we should be making financial provision on the basis that it is going to happen.
Thank you for that question. So, yes, in terms of almost certain, the risk has not quite crystallized, and therefore, we are in a position whereby we are taking a report to the Hub Committee in early November, specifically around the Health and Wellbeing Service. I don't think we're yet in a position where we're recommending to members to make any financial provision for that. But the report that the Hub Committee will receive in November will suggest a way forward with regards to that. One of those ways forward is to set up a member working group to look at the issue in more depth, and that's one of the recommendations that will be part of the report to the Hub Committee in November. So, yes, I think the report's going to Hub and to council, as well as the risk register coming to the Audit and Governance Committee, all align with the same timing. But, yes, I mean, the five-by-five matrix is quite the sort of industry standard for risk management. And as you say, that is the definition of a risk five on likelihood, that it's almost certain, but not yet crystallized to the degree that we've got sufficient certainty of that risk in totality, I would say. I don't know if Mr. Hawke wants to add anything to that.
Thank you, Lisa. I think, yes, so we've got a risk scoring framework. What we have done in the past is where something has scored five, and from memory, I think the last time was the Covid-19 impact on service delivery. Well, actually, you're quite right, councillor Tieddon, that wasn't an almost certain. It was, it became an issue. So it was no longer a risk, it became an issue. We haven't got a separate issues log, but certainly, from memory, in the reports, when we were bringing forward risk reports during that time, we began the risk descriptor with, this is no longer a risk, it is an issue, and this is what we're doing about it. So we tackle it in the same approach, but we do highlight where something has materialized, even though the highest score we can give it is a five in terms of almost certain, in terms of our current framework.
I'll leave it there, and I think join this debate when the issue that I'm talking about comes to the Hub next month.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions about the accounts? If there aren't, can we just take the recommendations, which seem to have disappeared? Will we approve, can we see the recommendations, one to five? We can see one, three, and I think the four and five, the fifth one, refers, does it not, to authority for us, for me? And Mrs. Buckle has signed the accounts when we have that. Are we content with approving those recommendations? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
That's great. Thank, can we move on to the Bishop Fleming, item six?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Edmunds as well for covering a good chunk of our report as well, so that saves me a bit of work. So we presented our audit plan to you back in March, and that set out audit approach for the year and the risks and how we're going to address those. And this report very much reflects back on the work we've completed to address them and other issues that have come out through the audit process. I think one of the things I said at the time was, one of the key goals for this year's audit is actually about the timeframe that we do the work in. So you remember, in March, we were presenting at the same time as Grant Thornton presented last year's findings. So we were talking about bringing the sign-off forward, so that actually, you can place more reliance, more value on the external audit opinion. It gives you a greater level of assurance and if it's delivered on a timely basis. So where we are today is that we're bringing this to you, I guess, five months earlier than last year, and we're looking to move that forward slightly again next year in terms of how clear we are, in terms of ready for sign-off for this stage. If I could just talk through a few bits in the exact summary, and then I'll probably pass to Mark, just to highlight a few bits of the detail, although I think we've covered some of these already. So part one of the executive summary talks about the overall objective of the audit, and as councillor Edmunds said in the introduction, it's been a very clean audit. Mark will take you through some of the details, but there's no adjustments being made, as you've heard there, to the actual numbers, just in the disclosure and the financial statements. And anything we've found has been sort of immaterial in terms of actual numbers, so no adjustment's been made. The overall objective is to give a clean and modified opinion on the accounts, which we're proposing to do, so to give a true and fair view of the financial position of the council and the income and expenditure for the year, and also to ensure it's been compared appropriately with the SIPF code, which encourages very transparent and lengthy disclosures in places. You'll see in our report that our report, our work is largely complete, and we've talked about the pension assurance letter that we're waiting for. The other final matters is just our final manager and partner review of the financial statement, and, sorry, our audit work, more importantly, just tidying up the few final pieces of work. It talks about in Section Two also completing some work around some of the risk areas, but that's now completed. So it's very much just our final reviews and waiting for that assurance letter before we can sign off. There's a paragraph in there about the members' audit deadlines. Since we presented our plan, the Secretary of State has now laid the regulations to introduce the new statutory deadlines, which is about the reset of the local audit environment, backstop arrangements, that's setting out that the 2024 counts need to be signed off by February 2025. So we're well ahead of that target. And then the plan is, over the next few years, this comes back of sort of a month at a time. So by March 2027, the deadline will be 30th of November 2027. So it'll bring it back in line with some sort of more sensible reporting timetable. So we're in good shape for that. We don't, we just need to note that, I think, here, but we're in good shape for delivering on that into the future. The other part of our external audit work, which we're not reporting back formally on today, is the value for money. So as well as our audit finance report, we produced an annual report, which will be coming to your next Audit Committee meeting. And just to highlight at this stage, though, that the work is complete on that area, and we've not raised any significant weaknesses. We are finalizing our report with management at the moment, and we report back over financial sustainability, governance, and improving economy efficiency and effectiveness processes. So as I said, we'll put that back into you at the next Audit Committee, but because we've completed that work, we're comfortable actually in being able to sign off on the external audit and the accounts. Then I think I'd just like to draw attention to Section Three, which, again, is reflection of the audit process. I think it's important for you as the Audit Committee to understand how the process has worked between us. It has been our first year, and we've been really pleased with the level of engagement we've had from the finance team throughout, from planning stages through to completion. It's been very clear that the finance team want to get things right, do things in the right way, get things ready for us in the right format that we want to see them. As a first-year audit, and the timescale we've sort of come into this, we weren't able to do some of the interim work we'd normally want to do before year-end, because Grant Thornton was still finishing their audit off. So next year, we're going to be looking at some of the timetables, when we can do some things a bit earlier, to make the process a bit smoother again over the summer, make the sign-off a bit quicker. We'll have a debrief after this process, once we're signed off, so we can work out exactly what we want to do early, and also talk through any of the information about anything else that could be done more effectively next year. But I think it's important to reflect just that thanks to the finance team there from us, that the efforts they put in to make sure things work effectively. At that stage, I'll pass on to Mark. Can you pick up some of the key bits around the audit risks?
So from Section Four of our report, which is from page 170 of the papers, we've got the audit risks that were set out in the audit plan that came to your March meeting, and it sets out the work that we've completed and our conclusions. Just running through the key ones there. So the first one is management override of controls. So this is a mandated risk that cannot be rebutted. And so this is considering the risk of management override of controls. It's a key part of our work, looking at potential risk of fraud. Our focus on this is looking at, we do a lot of work around the journals, because that's a key area in which the accounts could be manipulated. So we've got an analytic tool that does some analysis of the journals. We're happy to report back, there's no issues arising from that. Our work also then looks at accounting estimates and critical judgments made when putting the accounts together. So happy to report that there's no issues to report to the committee. Next two risks in there are just, for information, we're just confirming what we put in our audit plan, that we have rebutted the risk of fraud in revenue recognition and in expenditure recognition. So our work has confirmed that we can rebut both of those risks. Then moving on to page 172 of your pack, asking about the significant risk around valuation of land and buildings. So we're happy to confirm there's no material issues coming out of that work. We have noted in the report that the council revalued over 40% of its assets, that's assets by value, in the year. So what we've done is have a look at the assets that weren't revalued in the year, applied some indices to see if there's an indication that they, whether they're materially misstated. We're happy that that's not the case. We will continue to have discussions with management around ways in which assurance can be gained going forward, because obviously, there's always a risk that the assets that haven't been revalued could end up with a material difference. So we've noted there that that will be an ongoing discussion and could potentially involve the use of indices on assets that haven't been revalued. Over the page, we've then got the other area of the assets, the investment properties. At the time of draft in the report, this work was, we were just waiting for some outstanding queries to come back from the external valuer. As Nathan said, that's, we've had all that back, that work's been completed, and we've got no issues to report. So that's, that's all been tied up now. And finally, the final significant risk, which we've touched, has been touched on already, is around the Pension Fund liability. So we've noted that we're awaiting the Pension Fund Assurance Letter from Grant Thornton, who audit the Devon Pension Fund, but we have completed all of our other procedures in relation to this work. So there's no issues to report from that. So the Pension Fund Assurance Letter is the only element of this work that remains outstanding. Link to that, just to give you a flavor of some of the work, something we looked at in addition this year. On Section Five, we've set out a bit of detail of what we've done around IFRIC 14. Now, IFRIC 14 is the standard that gives guidance around where there are surpluses on pension funds. So you may be aware that a number of local pension funds went into surplus position last year. IFRIC 14 and the way that's applied has been, the way, sorry, the way the actuary have been applying that, their approach has been developing since last year. And what happened in 2324 was they identified an additional liability of £1.4 million that related to secondary contributions. That is all reflected in the council's financial statements, no problems with that, and we're happy that's the correct amount. What we did was consider whether, because the approach had changed from last year, whether there'd also been a liability in relation to secondary contributions in the prior year. Some inquiries were made of the actuary via the finance team, and we're happy, and we were able to get confirmation that that wasn't the case, and there was no liability in 2223. That was something that had moved on in terms of last year's accounts. So we're happy there's no liability for last year, so no need to restate any figures. Moving over to page 176 of your pack, we've mentioned, I mentioned the work that we carry out on journals. So we've included here a bit of information that we've called Audit Insights recently. It's a snapshot of some of the data analytics work that's come out of our journals investigations. So we've got the first table there, looks at the number of journals posted per month by posting dates. And what we're looking there to see if there's any trends that are indicative of any issues outside of our expectations. You can see there that the spike in journals, both in terms of numbers and values, is in April and in March. I think March was a bit of a anomaly this year due to the I think March was a bit of a anomaly this year due to the opening, the book for balances journals being posted post the completion of the audit by Grant Thornton of 2223. So we're happy there's no issues and no risks coming out of that. The second table on the page is Benford's Law. So Benford's Law is an algorithm that looks at statistical data, and the red line on that graph shows what you would expect to see from a set of data. So what we then look to see is anything that's outside of that, outside of that red line, what's the reason behind it? So again, it's looking at potential indicators of fraud. So what this means is that transactions beginning with the number two or the number five are higher than this algorithm would normally expect. We've looked into that, and the ones beginning with number two are parking fines, the ones beginning with number five relates to garden waste transactions. So there are basically a number, there are a large number of transactions for similar amounts, beginning with those digits going through, going through the general ledger. So happy that we had suitable explanations for that. So this really is included for a bit of information, additional information for members there. Just moving on then to section seven of our report, looks at the audit adjustments. As has already been noted, clean bill of health in terms of no adjustments to the primary statements, so none made there. And we've already picked up on the two amendments to disclosures, so we're happy with the amendments that have been made. The unadjusted item we've also mentioned in relation to the CCLA, something just to note there that there's actually an error in the cumulative amount, that should actually be 126 rather than 162. So there's a transposition error on the figure there. So basically, the 18,000 represents the in-year effect of this, and then the cumulative impact, including what was reported in Larch's report, is, should be 126 rather than 100. Moving on to page 180 of the pack, section eight of our report is our management letter reports, our management letter points. Happy to note that there's no new issues that have resulted in any recommendations or points to raise here. So what this section covers is issues that were raised by the predecessor auditor and our follow-up of those. So the first few of these are ones that are either unresolved or partially unresolved. So the first of these is around journal system controls. The recommendation from last year's report was, had two aspects to it, one of it, one of them was around the compensation control that is in place around the approval of journals. We're satisfied that the council's mitigating control is satisfactory, so we're happy that that issue has been resolved. The element that hasn't been yet is the segregation of duties around the systems admin role within the finance team, and we've got a management response there that sets out that that issue has been taken forward. The other two that are unresolved, are really unresolved because they're issues that came out of information that Grant Thornton would have requested as part of their audit. We haven't requested that information as part of this audit, as it's our first year, so we've altered those balances in a slightly different way. It would be data, we'd be likely to be looking at next year, so we'll follow up on both of those issues as part of next year's report. Second half of that page then is the prior issues that reported that we're satisfied have been resolved. We've got an update to each of those items there. I guess it's worth just touching on the final two, one of them around the use of unsupported software, because while we're satisfied it's not an ongoing issue, is something that's currently being resolved, so the upgrade to Civica Financials is happening currently, but we're satisfied that appropriate action's been taken. And like I was on housing benefits, the issue hasn't actually been resolved, but the council have a workaround solution that involves a lot of additional work on their part, and we're happy that that has resulted in us not identifying the same issue within our work that Grant Thornton identified last year. Moving on to the final sections of the report, we've covered in the other matters section, section nine there, this just covers some of the other things that we're required to report to you, looking at the other information within the financial statements, anything we need to report by exception, happy to report there's nothing that we need to bring to your attention. Value for money arrangements, Nathan's already covered that that work is complete and there's no significant weaknesses identified as part of our work. Bottom of, bottom of our section then sets out the audit fees for the year, so we've got the scale fee as reported in the original audit plan, and we've now confirmed the amount of the fee variation for the additional procedures in relation to the introductory ISA 315, which you may recall came in in 2223. This is something that you won't see as a fee variation going forward, because that will be baked in, is the terminology that's used by PSA, PSAA into the scale fee for 2425. Nathan mentioned also the audit backlog, so we've got a bit more information on that in section 10 for your information, but that's not something that we anticipate being something that will be an impact on West Devon or our council. And then finally, we've got a few appendices. The first of them is the letter of representation that you've already seen as a separate item on the agenda. And then the final appendix just sets out our required communications under ISA 260, and sets out where we've complied with that, where we've covered that off. Hopefully that wasn't too brief a run-through, but happy to take any questions that the committee have on the report.
Before I do that, I'd just like to thank the auditors on behalf of the committees. I think I use the word sterling work, and I think, thank you very much. We have a question, I think, from Counselor Johnson to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I talk about the 40% of assets that have been revalued in the past year? Probably a question for Mrs. Buckle. It's quite a large percentage, could you explain the rationale for this? And can you also tell me the other 60%, when will they be revalued and how often does it happen?
Yes, thank you very much. So the Code of Practice says that councils are required to revalue every asset at least once every five years. Each year, the council is required to carry out evaluations that cover at least 25% of our asset portfolio or more of the overall net book value of core assets. So to help with the outsourcing of asset valuations, we devise a plan with our assets team as to how we are going to, in which year, we're going to value which asset class. So our three-year rolling revaluation plan was devised in conjunction between the assets team and the finance team. So in this year, 2324, we revalued all our car parks and all of our public conveniences. Next year for 2425, we will be revaluing the residential and commercial assets, and then in 2526, we will be revaluing our main offices and our leisure centres. And every year, we revalue the investment properties, so those are done annually as required by the guidance. So that's our current revaluation plan. I think we did, we have had a discussion with Bishop Fleming about, because every year we do what's called an impairment review, so our valuers would look at all of the council's assets, so including the ones that haven't been revalued in the year, to see if they've been impaired in any way. So for example, if there had been a flood or a fire or something which had affected the valuation of any of those buildings. What we've also been discussing with Bishop Fleming is whether we, in the future, we can use some sort of indices. So for example, I think nationally this year, leisure centres have nationally gone up in valuation. Because this is not a year that we have revalued leisure centres, what we could, what we will talk to Bishop Fleming about for next year's plan is whether, as part of that, we look at doing some sort of, applying some indices for areas where we can see that assets have gone up in valuation, or the alternate way as well. So very much work in progress. We don't have our own in-house valuers, so this is work that we externalise on an annual basis, but we do try to do it by sort of asset class and as part of a bigger plan, really. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Counselor Redmond.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm looking at the executive summary, page 164, and it lists there the key audit issues. I just wonder how, what led you to these areas? Do these reflect national risk, local risk, previous audit reports at Worcester? Just wondering how you arrived at those areas.
The answer's all of those, all of the above. So these are the ones that we highlighted in our audit plan that we presented in March, there was our initial assessment of the risks. Some of those are prescribed by auditing standards to be considered as significant risk areas, so the management override of controls, consideration of fraud in revenue and expenditure recognition, under the auditing standards is considered to be something we should consider as a significant risk area. Then the others are, because they're significant valuations and judgments in your financial statements, so land and buildings valuation, which we just talked about, similarly, investment properties, and then the pension fund liabilities, these are the very large balances in your financial statements, and they are all subject to areas of judgment. So those are the areas that we consider to be significant risk areas, and it is actually consistent with what your previous auditors had assessed as well as a risk area.
Counselor Trig.
I've got a sort of a similar question, but coming at it from a slightly different perspective perhaps. We've had a change of government, and the new government is setting out a different stall from the previous government, and that will change many of the assumptions that go into the assessment of risk, or could do. I just wondered if you, if you take that sort of macro view of what the new government is likely to do, and how, if they did it, it would affect our finances.
To some extent, I mean, some of this is kind of post our period end, and a lot of these valuations, assessments and judgments are at a point in time in our accounts here. So, but absolutely, you'll see it reflected more next year in things like the assessments and valuations that are considered by the valuers, will be considered external factors that are impacted by the government. And I guess to the same extent, the pension valuations are impacted by the state of the economy and decisions that are made by the government, so things like discount rates are very much driven by things like monetary policy as well. So absolutely, that'll have an impact on certain valuations and numbers in your accounts. And the broader picture, a workaround going concern, although it's a light touch in our local authority in that, you know, the service still needs to be continued to be provided, we're looking at, we will consider that in the likes of when we're looking at these things like your reserves and your plans, very marked reserves and your future medium-term plans, in light of those government decisions in terms of future spending plans, once we all know a bit more in the autumn.
Any questions? Could I just ask for a clarification on page 179? It says the Audit and Governance Committee is required to approve the management's proposed treatment of the items listed below. I just wondered if, if you could say a large on that, to give us a, to make sure we do have to approve it, and what are we approving?
So this is in relation to the unadjusted items, isn't it here? So this is, we're comfortable from the external auditors' point of view, these items aren't material to the financial statements and don't feel that they need to be adjusted, but also when you're signing your letter of representation, there's a section in there that says you are also comfortable, on the audit governance committee side, there's loads charged with governance, that you are happy that they're not material enough to need the accounts to be updated for all those. So that's, it's a sign off from us, but also you need to be comfortable in your financial statements at the end of the day.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So this relates to the accounting treatment around the half a million pound investment in the property fund with CCLA. It's still my own personal view that these investments aren't redeemable on demand, and therefore that's why we treated it in the way that we did. I think that was evidenced during the pandemic. However, I do understand that both Bishop Fleming and Grant Thornton previously are of the view that the accounting treatment needs to be changed, and I think probably to avoid having this issue on our audit report every year going forward, and at some point in the future, it may become material, because these things would start accumulating. I think we will look to see whether we change our accounting treatment. I think Bishop Fleming are going to ask their audit clients whether, how, because quite a lot of councils invest in CCLA, and whether other councils treat it as we do. I think probably the majority of councils do treat it differently, but I think we just have to be aware of the fact that if we do treat it the other way, that if that statutory override doesn't get put in place by government after 31st of March 25, then we are susceptible in our income and loss account to those fluctuations in that investment. So for example, if that investment were to fall from half a million and only be worth, say, 100,000 in one year, we would have to take that 400,000 hit to our revenue account in that financial year, because there would be no statutory override reversing it out. Now, other councils have got, you know, quite a few million invested in CCLA, we've only got half a million. So one would think that that statutory override will just keep getting extended and extended, but we do have to bear in mind, we've got no guarantee of that. So if we do change our accounting treatment, we have to accept that risk in the future. So I think it's something we'll do more work on between now and March, we'll speak to Bishop Fleming further on it, we'll see what other clients and councils up and down the country are doing, and we'll come to a view and make recommendation to members at the March meeting as to whether we look to change the accounting treatment in future. Thank you.
I think it's very helpful. Anybody got any other comments and areas? Could I just turn to page 180, about the, as been mentioned before, about the unresolved recommendations, and I think it's just perhaps an update on the Civica. If I can find it myself. I mean, yes, on the journals, it was just mentioned, it's the Civica project plan to address responsibility for user admin and system access, et cetera. On that, I just wonder how that's going.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This is something we have discussed between us, both at the senior leadership team, but between heads of service as well. So at the moment, a person within Mrs. Henstock's team, within the finance team, has that responsibility for user admin and system access, and we recognise that not only has it been picked up by Bishop Fleming in their report, but also it's been picked up in the creditors' internal audit report by Devon Assurance Partnership, that they're recommending that that function doesn't sit in the finance team, that there is segregation of duties, and that function always used to sit in the council's IT team. We've spoken about it at the senior leadership team, we are recommending that it sits within the Director of Governance's directorate. So it's not, it's not a task which takes a huge amount of time, but it's just that rather than somebody within the finance team being able to give another member of staff user admin and system access, that instead falls within the Director of Governance's directorate, and probably within Mr. Hawke's team. So that's what we're looking to change in the future, and we've already had discussions about changing, changing where that responsibility sits, so that it no longer sits in the finance team, that's the recommendation. And we've forgotten Civica Financials. Now that the audit has been virtually complete, that will be the main priority for the team, is to migrate the Civica Financials. We're looking to go live with that on the 9th of December. Testing on that is going really well at the moment, so we've done a lot of testing around all of the different areas. I think one of the things that will probably take quite a bit of resource of the finance team is upskilling other members of the council, particularly budget holders, in how to use the new system. So it's not only the finance team being okay with the new system, we have to train all of the other budget holders and heads of service as well. So that's all built into the plan. But when we have our December Audit and Governance Committee meeting, hopefully we can give the committee some good news that we're on track to meet that 9th of December go-live date. Thank you.
Thank you, that's great, great stuff. I just have one more question, unless anybody else has got the thing to ask, was on, a similar sort of question on page 182, with the housing benefits debtors, again, it's, it's, is there a fix? Again, it's, is there a fix from Northgate or the workaround or just suffering that?
Just an update hot off the press, Chairman. Northgate have come up with a fix for it, which we're very pleased about because for this year end, we did all, a member of staff within the revenues and benefits team had to do it all manually, so they manually had to go through and check quite a few hundred accounts. And that's how we were able to give assurance to Bishop Fleming around the figure because we'd gone in and checked every single one, which was obviously very resource intensive. We don't want to have to repeat that. But yes, my understanding is that Northgate have come up with a way of addressing that going forward, so that's good news. Thank you.
Excellent. Any further comments? That's great. We just note that's important. Thank Bishop Fleming and for all their work. So we now on to Treasury Management. Is that right? Councilman Edmunds?
Right, well, the report provides a detailed review of the council's treasury management performance for the quarter ended the 30th of June 2024, including key financial activities and economic factors that influence treasury operations. The report covers several core areas, including the council's investment performance against the sterling overnight interbank average rate, SONIA benchmark, economic and interest rate forecast, and the management of the council's debt portfolio. As of the 30th of June, the council held 31.9 million pounds in investments. The portfolio's yield for the first quarter of the year was 5.22%, closely matching the benchmark, the SONIA rate of 5.23%. Section five of the report sets out details of the investment portfolio, which is spread between money market funds, fixed term deposits and property funds. The current forecast is that investment income will exceed the annual budget of 800,000 by 80,000. The latest interest rate forecast sets out a view that both short and long dated interest rates will start to fall once it is evident that the Bank of England has been successful in squeezing excess inflation out of the economy. The council's Treasury Advisor, Link Group, is forecasting that bank rate is set to fall to 4% by March 2025 and to 3.25% by December 25, which would impact the amounts of investment income earned from investments during the financial year 2025-26. Mrs. Buckle and the finance team will anticipate the reduction in investment income during the upcoming preparation of the MTFS commencing in November of this year. The council's capital expenditure plans for 2024-25 serve as a key driver for its treasury management activities. The council's capital financing requirement, or CFR, for this year is 23.7 million. External borrowing totaled 26.3 million at the end of June, which exceeds the CFR by 2.6 million pounds. This temporary difference is expected to finance future capital projects and mainly housing projects. Appendix A details the prudential and treasury indicators, which provide oversight on capital spending, borrowing needs and affordability. The council has complied with statutory treasury limits and prudential indicators, and the Director of Finance foresees no issues in future compliance. Borrowing limits remain unchanged with a maximum authorized borrowing limit of 50 million pounds for short-term needs. And finally, Chair, the Audit and Governance Committee is recommended to endorse the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Edmunds. Comments, questions?
Right, just a question, my own ignorance really. The first statement says we've slightly underperformed. I mean, it's absolutely 0.01%, not enough to worry anyone. But it says it underperformed the industry benchmark. Is that a benchmark of other sort of councils that have investments, or is it some wider benchmark? I mean, who are we benchmarking ourselves against is the question I'm asking.
So I think there are two benchmarks assessed. The national one is always the SONIA rate, so the sterling overnight interbank average. So that will be a national benchmark. But as part of that, we also sign up to a benchmarking club with Link Services, and those would be, we benchmark ourselves against other councils in the South West. So not only district councils, but unitaries and county councils as well are all part of the benchmarking club. And in the past, we've either been in the second quartile or in the top quartile for our investment returns. And I think key to that is the strategy that members have adopted in that we invest in banks and building societies within the UK. We also invest in money market funds, and those money market funds, they have very high credit quality, so they are AAA rated, they are low risk, high credit rating, because they invest in things like overnight reserves and commercial paper and short-term debt. And we are able to get very good returns on those investments. So I think it's keeping the investment short and the investment strategy, which allows us to get a very high yield on our investments and high liquidity, whilst also ensuring we've got high security as well. So making sure we invest in institutions, banks, building societies with a credit rating of at least AA minus, which is our strategy and seems to have served as well. So when you compare where other councils invest, in the benchmarking club, it shows in terms of other councils, they put about 10% of their investment portfolio overseas. And actually, that's not yielding any higher return than we're getting from keeping ours within banks and building societies in the UK and with money market funds. So we always keep an eye on where other councils are investing, just if they're, you know, getting any rates which are higher than ours, we look to see, you know, what it is that they're doing. But like I say, at the moment, we're benchmarking very well against others in that respect.
It sounds very positive that we're taking a pretty moderate risk position and getting the returns of people that are taking a bigger risk position.
Not all councils invest in money market funds, so some of the bigger councils only invest in banks and building societies, but some of those banks and building societies are overseas, whereas our approach has been more to split our portfolio with money market funds as well, because they're very liquid, you can get your money back very quickly from them, and they're very high credit rating as well. So they are quite, they're a little bit more admin intensive in that it takes quite a bit of admin to set up a money market fund. So, but once you've got them in a situation like we have, it's not too much to sort of keep investing. I mean, we have a member of staff that looks at our cash balances every day and makes investment decisions every day, which are then authorized by senior accountants within the team. So I think by making sure that's a daily activity, we also get advised by Link Services of any good investments that we want to take advantage of as well. And sometimes when there's a minimum investment of, say, five million or 10 million, and it may be that the borough council hasn't got that amount to invest, sometimes what we can do is package up an investment with Southampton, and the broker will accept an investment which may be, say, six million in one council, four million in the other, and they'll accept that as a 10 million investment. So we do benefit in that respect as well. Thank you.
You do ensure, of course, that Westervan gets slightly better returns than Southampton?
They're still exactly, they are still kept separate, so Westervan will get its share, Southampton will get its share. But in terms of the brokers, they will see that as, that we've met the minimum investment criteria.
Thank you. Any comments? Where is? Could I just follow up on some of that Councilman Edmunds mentioned about the projected falling rate that we will get? And obviously, it does present a risk, a forward risk in two, three years or whatever, or whatever. I guess that, as you described, how that will be dealt with through the medium-term financial planning, but do you have a sense of the potential impact of those falling rates?
I think I'd better just check with Mrs. Buckley, but I have seen, I have seen an early indication of that figure, but I won't disclose that just in case Mrs. Buckle was keeping that one under wraps for the time being.
Yes, that's exactly right, Councilman Edmunds. So we are, at the moment, our investment income budget is 800,000. The work that I'm doing on the medium-term financial strategy at the moment suggests that we need to reduce that budget down to about 650,000. And the advice from Link Services is that we budget for 2425 for an investment return around about 3.35%. So that's quite a bit lower than we're getting at the moment, but they think around 3.35% will be the average for 2526. Obviously, members will have seen that inflation has fallen to 1.7%. We'll wait to see what the decisions are from the Bank of England around base rates. But I think by the end of the financial year, we'll have a pretty good idea of where base rates are going for 2025. But it is predicted that by summer 25, base rates will be down around 3.5%.
Thank you very much, that's great. I've just got one, just a clarification on page 200, where capital expenditure, it just refers to reprofiling, what is called the Oakhampton Transport Hub, which presumably means the interchange. On that, have we already received the cash or do we draw it down as we spend it?
We did already receive five million pounds from the Department of Transport, which we received before March 24, so that came into our bank account right before our balance sheet year end. We have, as of the 31st of March, we'd spent about half a million of that, and we've just approved a second claim, which I think was for about 400,000. So at the moment, we are obviously investing those balances. Devon County in the main pay out the expenditure and then make a claim to us as the accountable body, and then we pay Devon County. So we will keep on doing that. With regards to the reprofiling, obviously, when we set the budget for 2425, we were expecting slightly more expenditure for that capital project, which is a leveling up bid for the Oakhampton interchange. We were expecting more of that expenditure to fall within 2425. I think that's the benefit of doing the monitoring reports, is we've got some up-to-date estimates from the contractors working on the new railway station in Oakhampton, and we can see that more of that expenditure will now fall into 2526. So that's why you can see on page 200, the capital expenditure estimate has decreased from the budgeted amount, and that's purely really due to the reprofiling of expenditure for the leveling up bid for the Oakhampton Railway Station and Oakhampton Interchange. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Can we approve the recommendation to endorse the report? Thank you very much.
Mr. Seckert?
So we've got item eight, which is the internal audit charter.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's a requirement of the public sector internal audit standards that members of this committee are presented with and approve the latest internal audit charter and strategy. Together, they ensure that there is an understanding of the role of internal audit, management and this Audit and Governance Committee. In terms of internal audit activities, there are only a small number of amendments from the current version approved by this committee this time last year, and these are set out in section 3.2 on page 206 of your agenda reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Well, I'm just going to ask a few questions as I have asked before, but just for sake of clarity, there's, obviously, thank you, the name changes, the name change. On accountability, founding partners to full partners, we had just noted that we're not full partners, and Mrs. Buckley has previously explained that, perhaps you could just very briefly explain why we're not?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so I carried out an analysis as to whether we ought to become full partners of the Devon Assurance Partnership. And we brought a paper back to members, which basically recommended that we stayed as non-voting members. And the reason for that is if we were to join the partnership fully, it would basically be more expensive for us because we would have to pay a day rate, not only for Mr. Measures, which we do at the moment, but also for our own internal audit staff. We've got two members of the internal audit team who currently do audit work across both Westervan and Southampton. If we were to become full voting members, those two members of staff would have to two-peat into the partnership, so they would be no longer our members of staff, they would be at Devon Assurances Partnership's disposal to be used at other councils on their internal audits. And we don't feel that we want to lose that knowledge and expertise of those two internal audit staff. They've built up a lot of knowledge and expertise, not only of Westervan but of Southampton, and that's invaluable to us. Their work is reviewed by Mr. Measures, who is part of the partnership. So we feel that we've got sort of the best of both worlds, if you like, in that we benefit from the partnership and all the benefits. That was particularly useful to us during the pandemic and during COVID, when we had business grants to administer. We administered over 30 million on behalf of the government, and we don't have our own in-house fraud team, but we were able to access the fraud team of Devon Assurance Partnership, which was extremely helpful to us because any fraud or suspected fraud cases, we were able to refer straight on to the partnership. The only thing it does mean is that we can't vote on items on the Devon Assurance Partnership agenda. So for example, when they set their day rate, when they set their accounts, we're not voting members, so we don't get a vote on that. But it would still be my advice to carry on as we are, because I think if we became full members, it would be more costly for us. And the only real benefit from that would be that we would get a vote on some of the things that Devon Assurance Partnership have on their agenda. But I feel we've got a good mix of having their independence that we can call on, but also retaining our own internal audit staff at the same time, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to note that I do attend the DAP meetings and do say my hapless when required, but so I do feel that they are represented. Councilman Seckert?
Just a very quick question. Is the door to being a full member sort of permanently open? If we chose to become a member, we could. I mean, if there was a good reason to become a member, we could do.
Yes, I'm sure it is. I'm sure Tony Rose, who's the head of Devon Assurance Partnership, and Mr. Measures, who's one of their senior managers, would, I mean, I can't answer on the behalf, but I'm sure that they would welcome us with open arms if we did decide to be full members, like some other councils are. But I think it's just that bit around the cost and around sort of losing our own internal audit staff as well. Yeah, thank you.
Just to add to that, we would welcome to have Julie and Matt, the two auditors in DAP, with their experience and knowledge, we could certainly utilize them across all our clients, but we understand that, you know, they feel happy where they are. And yeah, as, yes.
Thank you. Do you have other points? I'd just like to advertise one thing, it's on page I'd just like to advertise one thing, it's on page 215, where the head of DAP has direct access to the Audit Governance Committee and the opportunity to meet privately with committee members if required. I'm just advertising the fact that you see in the work plan, we have our private meeting, annual private meeting, I think it's before the next Audit Committee meeting. So I really hope, I don't expect anything to come out of it, please, but I think it's really valuable to have that private meeting members only with the auditors. And so please, if all committee members can turn up, it would be extremely valuable. Are we content with that? Okay, can we approve it? Well, thank you. Thank you very much. So where are we now? We're on item nine, Audit Committee Self-Assessment. Could I just kick that off before inviting Dominic to say something about that? I think this is really, really important, that it's really part of good practice to be self-aware and to learn and to appreciate your own opportunities for development, put it this way, to see. And I think I do welcome this opportunity for the DAP to facilitate this really, really important session, meeting.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, SITFOR a while back issued some guidance on how they see audit committees running and the skills and knowledge and performance of audit committees. Unfortunately, I can't share the document with you, two reasons. It's a SITFOR product with copyright on it. But also, we felt, Devon Assurance Partnership have felt that we don't want to give you in advance what you think an audit committee should look like and influence your answers. We just want a kind of, it in a raw state. What will happen is we'll run a workshop for about an hour and a half, two hours max, run through a number of kind of points that SITFOR sees as good practice, and through discussion, you come up with a kind of assessing yourself on a scoring system. You're not going to be the perfect audit committee, there will be room for development, we're sure. We've trialled it at one of our clients and have just produced a report on it, and there were about half a dozen items, areas for improvement. So we're hoping that we can run it in the new year. As I say, we'll facilitate it. Lisa was section 151, and Mr Powell, as Director of Governance, will be invited along as well to have their input and their knowledge of how audit committees, they think audit committees should be run. So it's a question of just finding out dates.
Thank you very much. Comments? Excellent, thank you very much. So can we agree the recommendation? I look forward to all members of the committee attending the session. I've got one just obvious question, what happens after that? And how would, and are we going to, should we, I believe we should be doing something like this annually, is that the intent?
The intent, I think, is to kind of, you'll have an action plan, and it will be reviewed on a regular basis to see how well you're, you know, developing. And yes, there will be a reassessment at some point, whether that's annually, that's something that's got to be decided. But certainly, we're not going to just do it once and just put it to one side and keep gathering dust on a shelf.
Very helpful. Can we agree all of that recommendation? Thank you very, thank you very much. Can we move to item 10, which is Strategic Risk Updates?
Thank you, Chair. This report is presenting an updated overview of the council's strategic risk register as outlined in Appendix A. It highlights the key strategic risks facing the council as of October 24, and offers insight into the council's ongoing efforts to manage and mitigate these risks. The strategic risk register is an essential component of the council's broader risk management framework, which ensures that significant risks are monitored, controlled and evaluated effectively. Since the council adopted the updated risk and opportunity management strategy in December 23, a formal process has been established to escalate and review risks from the operational level to the strategic level, ensuring that critical risks are appropriately managed. Four risk areas are identified in the report, all rated as amber, with risk mitigation action points and updates provided. The report also confirms that insufficient staffing resources has been de-escalated to the HR and organisational development service plan, as there are no longer widespread challenges for recruitment and retention, although recruitment to some senior roles is still proving to be difficult. Additionally, the report notes that an internal audit of the council's risk management approach is nearing completion, with the initial findings indicating substantial assurance in the council's risk management practices. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Comments, questions? Councillor Tiedl.
I just got a question about whether the organisations that we're a part of but not entirely running ourselves, I'm thinking here of the Devon Building Control Partnership in particular, whether that is scoped into our risk assessment process.
Sorry, would you like me to answer that? It's, oh, sorry, I think Mr Powell would like to answer first. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, anything that represents a risk to the organisation would be scoped and assessed whether or not it is forming a strategic risk. As you're aware, councillor Tiedl, there are some challenges with the Building Control Partnership at the moment. At the moment, they're not at a level that I think would represent a strategic risk, which is why they don't appear at this stage. Meetings that we've got coming up may change that position. But yes, anything, anyone we partner with, anything that presents a strategic risk to the council, operating, achieving its targets and its aims, could appear on this register.
I suppose I don't want to go into the mechanics of it, but if there is a risk in that area, of course, it's a risk that's in a sense shared by three councils, not just solely us. And that's why I wondered if it appears, in a sense, in three different risk registers or somewhere else. But certainly something which I think we need to keep an eye on, and we all.
Comments? No? Could I just commend the 2.4, 2.4 with the de-escalation? It's actually very good practice, I think, that things don't get taken off without an explanation and potentially without challenge from the committee that it should be taken off. On the face of it, I'm quite content with the explanation given, but I think the explanation given also mentioned that we still do have problems in key positions, so those are viewed as not strategic risks.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, the risk at the point that it escalated to the strategic, excuse me, the strategic risk register was very much on the basis of we were seeing widespread recruitment challenges across the organisation, which could have impacted our ability to deliver some of our core services, primarily, it's fair to say, on the back of the Covid pandemic, as people started to move around and move into different roles. And it also was challenging to recruit at that time. So I think at the moment, although we are seeing a challenge to recruit to those senior roles, we are talking about a couple of roles, and at the moment, it's not having a detrimental impact on service delivery. We are making do, I think it's fair to say, and considering how we attract the best talent. I think overall, our staff turnover, and we regularly review it, we have a healthy level of staff turnover nationally. I think the public sector has seen about 15% turnover, 14, 15% turnover in the course of a year. We're sitting just above 10%, so relatively healthy, you know, new talent coming in and people progressing into new opportunities. And there's been a real focused effort over the past two years to really hone in on our organisational development offering. So our HR team are now a HR and organisational development team. So rather than just focusing on those employee relations, they're focusing on what's our learning and development offering, what's our wellbeing offering, how do we support our staff? And all of that is contributing to a continual improvement in our staff survey satisfaction. So we're moving in the right direction, we're seeing positive results and positive levels of satisfaction with our staff, which typically sees good levels of retention.
Thank you, it's very helpful. I'm looking around for other questions before I ask my final one in that case. Yes, I was just looking for a limited clarification on page 248, which is the latest update on business continuity. It said, the final paragraph, SLT have agreed that added R, we'll bring forward a project management resource from existing staff to structure this work stream. I didn't understand that sentence, I have to say, I wonder if you can enlarge on it.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, what we're saying is that the business continuity function is, it's a massive piece of work to tackle business continuity across the council, and we're looking at bringing in a resource from within our existing management team to really coordinate that piece of work, to pull together all the various strands, ensure that each department's business continuity plans are complemented by others. So for example, everybody has a reliance on the IT business continuity plan. So that's effectively what we're saying, we're bringing somebody in to sit there to effectively project manage our business continuity. In addition to their existing role, I mean, to go back to the previous one, something we're really focused on at the moment is developing the future leaders of the organisation. So this will be an opportunity for somebody who's at that sort of middle management level to take on a wider scope and remit, but focus particularly on our business continuity readiness.
Thank you very much, that's great. What sort of timescale are you talking about?
Subject to my diary, we'll be pulling that person in by the end of this week.
Not urgent, then, all right. Thank you very much. Councillor Tiedl.
Just hopping back to a subject I raised earlier on in the meeting about the health and wellbeing risk on the risk register. And I think it was Mrs Buckle said that a paper is coming to the hub in November, and part of that will be the establishment of a working group, amongst other things. But is that paper coming to the hub with recommendations on how to manage the risk?
Not at this stage, Vice Chairman. So it does, within the report, seek to quantify sort of potential financial implications, but it also says within the report that we need more time really for, to know the further impacts of that. So that's why we're suggesting setting up a member working group. That member working group will then report back to Hub Committee and council, probably over the next six to 12 months. So that's the sort of timeframe that we're looking at.
I think my concern remains that if we position this risk on the risk matrix of almost certainly going to happen, which is roughly where it is, I would wish to see somewhere some work on what sort of financial provision we should be putting in place to manage it if it does happen or when it happens. And I don't see that sort of screaming out from the recommendations at the moment.
The report that will come to members in November will be a Part Two exempt report that will contain further information. And then I suspect there will be further reports probably in January, in the new year. So yes, more reports will be coming to members on that, and there will be more detail. We've held an all-member briefing on that subject, and yes, as we go through the next few months, there may be need to hold another all-member briefing. But I think the report that will come to the Hub Committee in November will give a lot more detail around that.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Is there, was there anything else? Well, thank you. Can we consider the, we have considered it, I believe. Thank you very much. Can we move on now to the work plan? Which is, as set out on page, whatever it is, 255. I just bring to attention, as I said before, the private meeting that we have, which is before, which is always very valuable. And note that actually, we do these plans for the year rather than a rolling plan. So we now come into the end of this. And I'm sure there's various things that will come out in the next plan. No doubt, a lot of it will come out of this piece of work that we're doing on self-assessment. Are we happy with the work plan? I'll take that as, I'll take that as over the moon. Thank you very much. I think the meeting is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.